Good evening, welcome to the Gray Town Council Workshop of September 5th, 2023. We're going to begin with roll call. Councillor Gass.
Present.
Councillor McGuire.
Present.
Councillor Meany.
Present.
And I'm Councillor Chapel. Councillor Height is excused for the evening. To my right is Town Manager Nate Rudy. So if, as you can see, the agenda's kind of vague. Preparation for the town meeting on September 9th. I just wanted to give the council and staff an opportunity to review some process items we've, we've learned about in the last week or so, which Dan thankfully, or thank you for typing those up for us. I've included them in the packet. And then I wanted to have a discussion among councillors. Since Nate's last day is September 8th, the day before the meeting, he won't be able to do the presentation at the special meeting at 9:30. So I just want to talk about what that looks like for us and how we're going to handle presenting material to residents who are in attendance. So let's actually begin with Dan's notes from the meeting he had with Nate and Natalie Burns and Britt Barton, the town clerk, about what can and can't happen at town meeting and how registrations will be happening. I'm just trying to find the packet page.
Forty-two.
Packet page forty-two, thank you. So Dan, would you mind just kind of giving an overview of what you've written up here and what was discussed today?
Yep, absolutely. Basically went through the mechanics to dust off those, those memories of town meetings gone by. This is not an open town meeting in the sense that we'll be voting on anything other than the budget. There are no new motions that can be made to add things to the agenda of the town meeting. Britt will have six to eight people working with her that day. They'll have three checking in voters, just as we would if we were doing a referendum. There will always be one person at that station throughout the meeting for any latecomers that would come in. Residents may register to vote, but the rules are the same for the town meeting as anything else. So you need to have not only proof of identity, but proof of residency. And each person will be given a brightly colored card, not red or green, because those have a lot of, carry a lot of baggage with them, but just something that makes it easier to pick out raised hands in the crowd.
So if you're voting in the negative, you just would not raise the card?
No, you would.
Oh, you would?
We need to, there will be a, there'll be a call for everybody in favor and then there'll be a call for everyone opposed.
And then will they go around and count each of those hands that are raised? Or is it just a visual?
The room will, no, the room will be divided sort of into quadrants and the extra people that are working with Britt will each sort of count the number of people in that chunk of the room. Britt will open the meeting by reading the warrants and then asking for nominations for moderator. She'll entertain all the nominations that are made. We, of course, have confirmed with Natalie that she's available to be the moderator. And that is done by a written ballot. So that basically would be a piece of paper and everybody will write down the person's name on it. So that will, obviously, that will take some time depending on how many people attend.
So there, someone will need to nominate Natalie on the floor.
Yes.
Can, can we do that as councillors?
Yes.
Okay.
As councillors in this meeting, we have no authority. We're just residents and voters.
Right, but we can vote as a resident.
But we can vote, yeah, and we can speak to the issue. Assuming Natalie is elected, she uses the 2021 Main Moderators Manual as a guide. That will be her guide for, you know, any questions that come up. I have suggested in the past that we make a motion to allow non-resident taxpayers to speak and to do that en masse. She's, she thought that that really isn't the best idea, that what we could do and probably should do, especially since Nate won't be there, is to make a motion that would allow non-resident employees to speak. And that way the department heads, if there was a question, would be free to come up and be able to speak to an issue. But she thought that we should deal with any requests by non-residents in the manner that the, that the town meeting lays out, which would require a two-thirds vote of the people present to give that person permission.
So she was suggesting, at least for people that own property in town but are not residents, that instead of having a motion at the beginning to include all of them for comments, we should just vote if the issue arises?
Correct, that's what she's suggesting, yep. Probably the most important thing, or not important thing, but one thing for people to understand is that motions can be made to reduce a warrant article, but motions may not be made to increase the budget. And that's pretty common, actually. The, the thing that I learned that I think we're definitely, she's, it'd be important to have her explain to everybody, is that you may make a motion to cut a particular article, say Article Two, but you can't make a motion to go in and say, "I'm going to cut line item XYZ." So that someone could say that I want to reduce Article Two by a hundred thousand dollars. And then it would be up to the manager and the council to figure out where that hundred thousand dollars is going to come from.
Would that be something we would have to figure out at that meeting?
No.
Or could we do it after the fact?
Nope. What we'll come away with there is, is basically a set number for each of those articles. Theoretically, we don't have to leave until it's done. Hopefully, it won't take, you know, all day. It is actually possible to suspend a town meeting and reopen it on another day if you don't finish, but I'm really kind of hoping that that's not in our future.
That's not in the cards.
I don't think, I think most people in attendance would not have the desire to do that, but I could be wrong, but.
So for instance, and this applies to, you know, the way we regrouped with Nate help, regrouped the, the articles and the spending issues. Say someone wants to come in and, "I want to cut fifty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars to get rid of LD1." They can't cut that article. They could go in and they say, "I want to cut fifty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars from Article Two." And then, you know, you would go and figure it out from there. And because if we cut that amount, the one question I didn't ask her at the time and I've thought of since, and I'm sure she'll be able to answer at the meeting, is if there are cuts made to the budget that are agreed upon by the people present that reduce the budget below the LD1, does that become moot and we don't vote on that?
Yeah, that was going to be my, yeah, that was going to be a question I had.
Or I'm not exactly sure how that would, that one works.
Because we can't really remove a warrant article legally once the meetings begin.
Yeah. I mean, you'd be, you know, I suppose at that point in time, the LD1 increase would be a zero. You could do the all in favor.
It would be moot because if you're under it, whether it passes or not doesn't matter.
But would we, when we're voting on the warrant, if it becomes a zero dollar figure, would we amend the warrant at the meeting to save zero dollars?
That's what I'm not sure of, whether, whether Natalie can just be, as the moderators say, you know, it's, it's moot because there's no value in that article, or whether, as Nate suggested, we have to go through the motions and actually vote it out. I don't know. I think that would be pretty, pretty easy to, to sort through though, if that's what happens. So it's a pretty straightforward process. It is a pretty straightforward day. We are dealing just with the, you know, the articles. You know, some town meetings, they may have a hundred articles because they're approving ordinances and a whole variety of different things, but that's not what this is about. And I just would like to say, to answer the question that I've fielded a couple of times, is around why are we having a town meeting versus why aren't we doing another referendum? And the last time the budget failed, the, you know, we had a referendum. And it's really a simple one-word answer, it was COVID. I mean, it was during that time that we were working under the, all the emergency proclamations and we couldn't find a space big enough that could hold all the people that possibly could show up. And the last thing we wanted to do is have more people show up than could be to the facility. So if, you know, the attorney said, under the circumstances, it was perfectly okay to have another referendum and that's why we did. Now, we can change the charter and we can always go to referendum and that usually means that more people will have a say.
Yeah, I, I've had similar conversations with neighbors and just people checking in over email. It does seem like there might be an appetite after this to have a charter amendment, amendment that would address the process for a failed budget. Because it does seem, and I would agree, that having a town meeting certainly is less inclusive and also less representative of the town as a whole. So I, I maybe we, I would be in favor of exploring that as a council after this process is over.
I, yeah, to add to that, I mean, I've had, I've heard from several people who say, especially older folks, that it's just too long to sit and they can't physically do it. So, and that's, you know, it's terrible because these are people who religiously participate in, in voting and, and take a lot of pride in doing that. And so we're just, and so people like that are people with young children who can't find daycare and things like that. It's just, it's a really hard thing to ask people to give up a Saturday.
Not to mention people who are on vacation or working or, you know, it's just, it's not a flexible way to hold representation, representative government.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be the old coot in that argument. I don't disagree with any of that, but you know, at some point in time, folks, you got to decide what's important to you. And, and making your town work, I think obviously is important. I wouldn't be here if I didn't. And, you know, yeah, there are surprises that happen, certainly, and that's to be considered, but we've, you know, some of these things are known pretty far in advance. And I don't think that it's too much to ask people to inconvenience themselves once in a, in a while for, for the benefit of the whole community. I understand that's a less than popular point of view, but without that commitment of people coming to either town meetings or to these workshops or to the polls to give us some indication of what direction they think the town should go in, we're just kind of left to our own devices. And to be honest with you, that's somehow, sometimes how we get into these predicaments because we don't find out until after the fact what it is that people really want, so.
Okay, well, it sounds like we can revisit a conversation around any changes to the charter we see are warranted after this process. Does anyone have thoughts on, or clarifying questions based on what Dan's noted here and the conversations that we've had with Natalie? Are we all pretty clear on the process? Yep, good, okay, great. So let's, let's kind of regroup around the special meeting that's happening at 9:30. So just to, just to say again, so people are aware, the town meeting begins at 10:30 on September 9th, but prior to it, beginning at 9:30, the council's holding an informative special meeting to review budget revisions and just, so everyone's on the same page as to what we'll be voting on at 10:30 for the warrants. I've included the presentation Nate created for the public hearing last Monday, the 28th, as I thought it was a really good starting point for what we might want to present. We could, we could, Nate, I assume you have notes that go along with these slides?
I have a spreadsheet with some figures that generated the slides, but these are really, there are no additional notes.
You didn't have any like speaking notes that you created or anything?
No, I didn't.
No, okay, we're just, oh, that was impressive, you did that off the top. So, yeah, so we could use this as is, or we could, I'd be happy to, I finally have more time, my children are back at school, as long as the bus picks them up. I would be happy to craft something different if we feel we don't, we want to have a different format. And then I just want to have, so that's one question. The other, the other conversation slash question I would like to have is how, you know, how we would like this presented. As chair, I could be the one up there just doing it, or I don't know, maybe we want to share that responsibility as, since it's not just my proposal, it's the council's. So maybe, I don't know, let's talk about that first because I think that's easier.
I think, I guess the thought that came to mind was that the articles are essentially the agenda. And so I think that if we use that meeting to just go through the articles, Article Number One, what's Article Number One about? Well, you never see that in a referendum because that's the one we use to elect the moderator. That should be easy. Article Two, obviously, there's a lot more meat and potatoes to that. I think at that point in time, you know, anybody who has any questions about Article Two, we can spend some time fielding those and answering those rather than make another presentation per se.
Okay, so you'd like to have it be more of a conversation, a Q and A?
Q and A, more, yeah, it would be sort of my take on it. I mean, if 500 people show up, that may not be as doable. We might have to, we might have, I think we should go in with a Plan B, but if 20 people show up.
Yeah, that would be manageable as a conversation, just as the public hearing was, but yeah, I guess that, yeah, that's my concern is if we go in there with presentation and an idea of just sort of having a brief summary of what we're talking about for each warrant and then just opening it up for questions, that would be my concern, that it might get a little out of hand if there's like, you know, 200 people in the room.
Well, we can certainly go through Nate's presentation and just hit the warrant article pieces. You know, there's a lot of additional information here which people might be interested in. I think having, you know, if we were to print off the slides on a, in a bigger format and, you know, have them along, you know, the corridors, people come in, or someplace where people could look at them.
That's a good idea.
You know, that might be, be something that would be helpful. I don't know if we've made arrangements to be able to make photocopies at the event.
Yeah, so Nate and I were talking about that over the phone. I, I think we were planning on just making around a hundred copies of everything we were providing with, with the hopes that that would be enough. But yeah, what would happen if we ended up needing more there?
I'd hate to throw eighty of those away.
Yeah, no, I know. I didn't want to have, I didn't want to not have enough either, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand, that's, no, it's not unreasonable.
Yeah, I, I also said do them in grayscale as much as possible, since my color.
Well, and in that case, because some of these won't translate in, into grayscale. I mean, the pie charts, for instance, will be unreadable in grayscale, really.
I'm not sure we, that might be one element we could take out because I'm not, just, when people are glancing at that, it might be really hard to really understand what.
Yeah, I think that it's, there is, there's a lot of information there. I think it's also, it's a little unfortunate that the colors changed between one chart and, and the next, so they, so if you're looking at the dark brown or you're looking at a particular color, you know, if you look at the public safety, for instance, I don't know if that's the printer or if that was the color. If you look at on the top one, utilities is that dark green where public safety is below, something shifted in the second.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
See, so I think that's problematic too, because it is, the type is so small. You know, why is, why is dark green all, such a smaller slice before and now it's a huge slice?
Yeah, I, I think it's, you know, it's unlikely we're going to be able to bring people up to speed entirely on, on the whole budget, given how many hours and hours and hours go into creating it. So focusing on the warrant articles and what they mean, I mean, I mean, and I, I think, you know, making the point that we've been advised by the town attorney that we needed to vote on all the warrant articles and to expand the number of them so they don't look the same as what we voted on in June, I think, you know, we just, we're going to need to say that at 9:30 and we're going to need to say that at 10:30, honestly. And, and just make sure they understand that. And then, I, I mean, I, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that there are, there could very well be a lot of people there who have never participated in passing a town budget in this way.
Yeah.
And so I do think that we need to provide the kind of rules of the road a little bit the way you just did, Dan. I mean, I think just, Dan just going through his.
I'd certainly be willing to do that.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah, I did have that thought and I kind of meant to say it and then forgot, so.
Natalie as the moderator has a lot of leeway to coach, coach us as a crowd, you know, when, when we come to different portions of the meeting. But yeah, I'd be happy to do that, that would be easy to do.
Would, would we want, we couldn't do that though at, at 10:30? We would have to do that in the 9:30 space, correct?
It would be Natalie's responsibility to do the, the town meeting piece of that. So she might, she might do something similar to what, you know, my notes are. She may say, you know, "Thank you for, you know, electing me to be moderator and this is how, you know, the process is going to work."
Okay, so you, maybe you could do the overview at the special meeting?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Natalie could take on as, whatever her version is of that.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
At 10:30, okay.
I think it is going to be worthwhile to lay out to, to people the sort of rules of the road, just because it will, I hope, hopefully prevent confusion and frustration as we get into the, the meeting itself.
So if we just focus on the, explaining the warrants, that begins on pa, page, packet page seven of Nate's presentation. Just wanting to look at the slides above it to see if there's anything we want to include. I do think that first page about the facts about the mil rate and how it's a 1.23 increase and, from FY '23, but really only a 0.43 increase from FY '21 mil rate.
You're talking about page three?
Page three, yes. Yeah, the first slide with content, yeah.
I think, you know, and maybe there's the compromise of having, you know, page three, page four, you know, pages five and six, maybe, you know, that you could put up on the wall that people could see if there was information there.
Yep.
Okay.
But as opposed to having the wording of all the warrant articles. Because we'll have the warrant, which is only a three-page document, so, and everybody can have a copy of that.
Yeah, we should definitely have a copy for.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely probably make the hundred copies of the, I think we can do front and back of the warrant articles, yeah. If we can't, if we can't just, you know, use one of the photocopiers there to knock out another dozen if we need them.
So you want a hundred of the warrant articles, a hundred of the two-page change summary, and a hundred of some form of this presentation that might be edited down a little bit?
That was what I had suggested.
Yeah.
That, if we feel differently, we can certainly amend that.
I just want to walk in.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah, I understand. I, for me, the, the, you know, the warrant articles are clay tablets. I mean, that's what we, we're bringing to the meeting, what we've got to come away with. And I think, I think factual information from this presentation is good, but I do worry about it causing confusion to, maybe I.
So you're, are you saying we should just hand out the warrants and stick with that and just use the rest to explain it verbally? Is that what you're?
That's my thought, but, you know, people may not like that. I don't know if that's a good idea, that's just what I think.
I mean, I was operating under the more transparency, the better, the more information, the better, but perhaps that's just adding to confusion, as you're saying. I, yeah, right. I'm one of the people that have never done town meeting before, so, yeah, so this is new to me and I, you know, I'm not sure what the best practice is for information sharing at this type of event, so.
I mean, there, there is, I don't think there's a right and wrong answer if you want to err on the side of, of transparency, which I think is good. I think we all want that. We should make copies of it and they can be available to people. But we can emphasize at the meeting that, you know, what we're using for our discussion and for what we have to vote on is the warrants.
What do, what do you think, Marty? Do you want to just provide as a handout the warrants and rely on the other content to be?
I like the idea of the warrants, you know, like, like in copies so everybody can get one of those.
Right.
And if we run out, let them share if they have them.
Right, but what, what do you, what are your thoughts on printing out copies of other content like this presentation or?
Hmm, yeah.
You do think we need?
Yeah. Unlimited amounts.
Maybe we, maybe what we can do is have a hundred copies at the high end for the warrants and then just?
Fifty.
Fifty of the others, just in case people want to see those too, or?
Like I said, if, if we could, if we could make copies there, we can certainly reimburse the school district for, for the copies.
Is that, do you know if that's an option, Nate?
We're going to check in on that.
Okay.
I assume, I mean, they're going to open the door, the janitor, the custodian will be there, you know, the whole time that we're in the building, so they would have, be able to let us in to use a copy, copier.
Okay.
We, we have a follow-up meeting scheduled on site with them tomorrow.
Okay, but for now, let's plan for the most copies of the warrants and then fewer copies of the other content we discussed and just, yeah, and then we'll just confirm that availability of the printer.
I, I do like the idea of having some stuff just up on the wall.
Yes, yeah, I think that's a good idea, too.
I do think kind of less is more in some respects. I mean, it's possible to swamp people with, with more information than is needed. I mean, really, I, I mean, it can happen at town meeting that, you know, people get persuaded one way or the other how to vote for a particular article, so I'm not saying we shouldn't, there shouldn't be discussion or, but I, I, I just worry, I mean, a, a lot of the communication that I've gotten around this, this special town meeting is people's concern that it could go as late as five o'clock. You know, people are just like, "I'm not going to come if it's that long." And so I, I just don't know that we want to encourage like lengthy, lengthy discussion of every article.
I think the moderator can help us there, you know. The goal isn't to get to consensus, the goal is to pass the budget or to have it fail and then to modify it if it, if it fails. You know, I, I think the thing that's made me hesitant is this is a 30-page packet.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, so that's, that's a big chunk of paper and.
It is a big, I agree, yeah.
For people to be going through it. I think, you know, like you say, let's make some copies and have it there. You know, maybe we can share them or whatever, I don't know.
I would, I would be in favor, since we're handing out.
Can hand out the warrant when they come in.
Right, so if, since we're handing out voting pieces of paper anyway, why don't we hand out the warrants while we're also doing that?
Yep.
And then we can have the extraneous copies of other things aside if people are having a hard time seeing them or something and they want to.
Yep, I think that's a good idea.
Does that sound okay, Nate? Do you think we could hand out the warrants while we're also handing out the voting, the cards?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
And then you just want to have fewer copies of the presentation.
Yeah, just on a side table or something, if people want to grab them and need them.
Okay, and then do you want some of the plotter printouts of any of the pages on the wall?
What, say that again?
Do you want us to print any large forms?
Like posters, sort of.
Posters of any of these pages?
Oh, can we, can we make them larger?
We have a plotter in the print, in the development office that can print probably like a two-by-three size.
Yeah, I think that would be good if we can, I would like to have something on the wall that people could visually look at, both the warrants and.
I'd just ask the council to tell me which pages you want me to have.
Yeah, so I'm, I think we're going to go through this presentation and identify what we want to include in our presentation. I will, if you could forward me the, I think I only have the PDF version of this. If you could forward me the actual PowerPoint, I'm assuming it's PowerPoint, then I can, I can just use this and edit down and then whatever. When do you, when, when would you need that by to make copies?
Oh, by Friday.
Okay, so I will get that to you by Friday morning after, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the office is closed at noon, so.
Yes, Thursday night.
Maybe close the business Thursday.
Right, close, right, sorry, yes, that's a good point.
And will there be pencils handed out for our, or, you know, because we have to vote in writing?
Imagine we'll have all the pens that we use. Imagine we'll have all the pens that we usually have for the referendum.
Okay, all right, so those, those will be available for people to.
That's a good question to ask. Because Britt will have to make up some sort of, you know, bits of paper for ballots and things like that, so.
Okay, um, okay, so if we start on packet page seven for presentation, um, I'm just trying to go through the, the first, that includes warrants two, three, four, five, and six, which are all relative to, um, any mill rate.
Changes, right.
The first.
Which is where we would inform people that if you wanna reduce the budget, it's gonna be in two, three, four, or five.
Right, exactly. So just going through this, the first three pages following page seven are a summary of the, both the general fund and the capital reserve fund expenses. The following, two pages after that are, um, the.
Can I interrupt you for just one second?
Yeah.
Sorry, should it be two, three, four, five, six, and eleven, really? 'Cause council, council compensation is part of the budget, right?
It is covered under the.
Yeah.
Let's see, it would be under the general fund on page nine of your packet, under.
So maybe we just wanna modify slide seven to add eleven.
Article eleven, on.
Two, three, four, five, six, and eleven.
Okay, so, sorry, let me just capture that.
And, and article eleven, or?
Yeah, yeah, it's article eleven.
Two, three, four, five, six, and eleven.
And eleven, yep.
And then on page nine, we could point out that, uh, the town council budget item under the department budget line items, article eleven, could be put on there the same way it shows up on page ten for article three through six.
I guess I'm not fol, I'm not following what you're saying there, sorry.
If you look at page ten of the packet, uh, several of those lines are tied to specific articles.
Okay.
The top, the top four lines.
Oh, I see, article three, four, five, six there, okay.
On page nine, you could similarly put a note that the town council budget is article, at least in part, is article eleven.
Right, and that, that ten thousand five hundred is part of that.
Okay, which, but it would not be under council boards and committees, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Town, oh, right, under there, not town.
We're, we're ten thousand five hundred.
Okay.
Line numbers, line numbers, line numbers.
Article, right, damn, article eleven, okay. So I think we're all in favor of using those summary pages there for, does everyone feel comfortable using that summary?
So seven, eight, nine, ten.
Or eight, nine, eight, nine, ten. That's the sum, those are the, that's the summary of the general fund and the revision.
You'd use seven too, though, right?
Seven's just, yeah, that's just the intro slide.
Yeah.
But yeah, yeah, I would use seven.
Yep.
Um.
Nine, ten, yep.
And then eleven and twelve are the changes we've made, revisions. I'm not calling them cuts, 'cause they're not all cuts.
Yep.
I, I think, yeah, we'll just have to select certain things to talk about in that. I would be in favor of removing the pie charts.
Yep, I would remove thirteen and fourteen.
Okay.
I, um, I think my preference would be to reorder the slides, so that when we have our conversation about the articles, we don't, um, sort of suspend that conversation to have a, a conversation about the notable expenses, or the wage adjustments, or, um, or that we put these slides with, we match the slides up with those articles, so that it's sort of sequential.
I see what you're saying, so the notable, notable expense increases would go under the slides for the summary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. You know, the proposed weight and wage market adjustments, that would, would sort of follow suit.
Yeah.
You know, then, when we get to.
So that would be pages six, fifteen through
Twenty-two.
Nineteen? Oh, no, those are, well, those are revenue, yeah, we. So would you if, would you move it up between the summary and the proposed revisions, or af, just, I mean, right now, they're just following the summary and the revisions, or?
Yeah, for instance, you have, you have pages eight, nine, and ten, which are basically the budget, the revised budget.
Right.
So I, I might put the, uh, the notable expense increases in there, and the explanation about the market rate wage adjustments there.
I, do we need to put that in writing? I mean, or, or to have them available to people, I just think, that's the sort of thing that we could, you know, people would say, well, what's in those? And then, you know, we could have a conversation about it.
So you're proposing just removing those slides?
I think less is more, I mean, do we want people listening to discussion and following the numbers? Or do we want them reading stuff and, and spacing out the discussion? That, that's my concern.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, I think maybe we change the content, uh, less slides, the better, I think. But I do want to have some slides, 'cause I don't want it to just be an open-ended Q and A that never ends. Maybe we could use these slides fif, what is it, fifteen through twenty-two, was Nate saying? Yeah, um, as notes for discussion, or?
Yeah, those could be ones that could be made sort of into poster size and put along the wall, for instance.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I have no objection to, in the nine-thirty meeting, having the, you know, maybe going through some of these quickly, but I, I think when it comes to the handouts for the ten-thirty, you know, budget meeting, or the, the special town meeting, I, I just don't think that we want people trying to figure out where, you know, kind of leafing through a bunch of different pages.
I think when we're talking about, when we're, when we're into the articles, I think we should constantly be referring people back to the, the articles, the three-page handout.
Yeah, I agree.
The, the other pieces, as Krista said, is just informational in our attempts to be completely transparent with people.
But, so to Ann's point, do we need to have these, if we take them out of the presentation and just use them as talking points, do we need to have them as printouts on the wall for people to reference, or can we just rely on our communication?
It's a judgment call, I mean, I don't think there's right or wrong. I think you, I think the idea of, of slimming it down makes sense, so I guess I would be in favor of pulling them out. If you wanna cut dry handle.
Okay.
And then whether we make posters out of some of them to put up as informational things is, is, um.
Okay, so, okay.
So we're gonna remove thirteen through twenty.
Two.
Two.
Okay, so after twenty-two is, and not, begins another warrant. Picks up at article seven.
Yep.
I'm fine with leaving this content in here as is.
Yeah, I think this part works really well.
I, I like the, I like the, the, um, written word version on page twenty-three. Do we, do we wanna include the monetary figures on twenty-four?
Um, you know, it's the detail.
Okay.
So I, I, I guess I don't have strong feelings on that. I think going forward, this may be the thing, this may be, we may be sort of circling the drain around identifying a good format for the presentation, which is you have the narrative followed with a specific slide that illustrates that.
Okay.
Either using parts of the spreadsheet, or pie charts, or, or other information.
Well, article eight, which is packet page twenty-five, and twenty-six follows the same format, so I would imagine we'd wanna keep that.
Yep, article nine is different, but it's specific, so.
Article nine, what's article nine? If we skip over it in the presentation, article nine.
Twenty-six. So I, I would include that in article.
Article nine is ARPA.
Yep.
Oh, I see, I was thinking that was still article eight, okay, article. Article nine. Got it.
I mean, once you get below twenty-three, I think it's pretty well just the articles, uh, point seven, eight, nine, ten.
Ten, eleven, twelve.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Thirteen has some explanation about L, LD one that you may or may not even believe in.
So, you know, you may not wanna include thirty-one or thirty-two at that point. I'd be, I'm happy to leave, let you decide as you work, rework it, if it makes sense to.
I mean.
The first page, thir, maybe thirty-one and not thirty-two.
Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, maybe just thirty-one. Do we wanna move article, the article eleven slide up to the general fund conversation, or do we wanna keep it here in order?
Um, I, I, you know, I think you could do it either way, frankly, I think since it's its own article, I'd probably leave it chronologically and spot in place, rather than.
Maybe just reference it being part of the general fund?
I mean, if anyone is gonna be searching through the document, if they're in numerical order, that's gonna make it just much easier for people to find what they're looking for. So thirteen plus page thirty-one, then you have fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Yeah. Twenty-nine through.
And I think that would, that would do it, depending on how many pages that is total, if it stems down, so.
I don't know either, I'll have to redo it and let you know.
The other thing you might consider, and I don't know how this would look, but, you know, because it's only a reference piece, and it's not something to be studied, yeah, um, printing two pages to a page, you know, might, um, might be a.
For the slides, I think.
For the slides, might be a suitable solution, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just to reduce the paper.
You know, it's gonna shrink it down, and make sure it's large enough for people to read. Yeah, that's, that would be a problem, so it might be worth experimenting, but if it doesn't work, then, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do a lot of changes to make that format work, but it's just something to consider.
What about, um, pages thirty-seven through the end, which is, well, forty, really, um?
I think that, for me, that's conversation.
Yeah.
You know, that, if someone has a question, or someone wants to cut something, or someone wants to, you know, get into the reasoning behind their position, that's kind of what that is.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. Okay, well, I can rework that, um, I'll try to work on it tomorrow and share it with folks, if you could just let me know your thoughts, if you get a chance, and then I'll send it to staff to make copies by close of business Thursday.
I would say if you don't hear from us, go for it, you know.
Okay, yeah, no answers.
No answers.
No answers, a yes.
Yes, yeah, but I think that should be the default position, and then you're not scurrying around trying to figure out.
Agreed, it's on us to.
Yep.
So then I, that just brings me to, um, you know, what, how do, how do we want, how do we wanna present this? Do you, Dan, I know you said you wanna, you're gonna get up and do a kind of rules of the road thing at the beginning.
I can explain the, the, the sort of workings of the town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, and then, do you want me to take, does everyone just want me to take the lead on presenting this, or do we wanna take turns?
I, I think it makes sense just to have you do it, if you're willing to.
Marty, have, do you?
Sorry to dump that on you.
No, it's, no, it's fine, I'm sharing.
Well, and I think, you know, we can all help with answering the question.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't want it to appear that I'm dictating this, but, you know, 'cause it was a group effort and group conversation, but I'm happy to take the lead as the representative for this.
I think, again, from the consistency, having one person, you know, present all the information is, is easier sometimes, uh, to communicate than to pass that baton.
Okay, but yeah, I, I like that if we could all, sometimes we're, we're, some of us are expert on, experts on some elements of this budget more than others, so if we all have a chance to speak to an item that they feel more confident about, I'm happy to.
Yep, we're all hanging on to a different part of the elephant.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, um, is there anything else we feel like we're missing, Nate, do you?
Well, I had one question from Britt, actually. I have asked the, I have asked the department heads who are planning to attend to sit toward the front of the room near a podium together in case anybody asks them any questions, so they're easily identifiable. Uh, normally, the school board sits on, at a table on the auditorium stage during their town meeting. So the question is, how does the council want to sit in the meeting? 'Cause we need to, we need to stage that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should differentiate ourselves, we're the ones making proposals for this budget, so I, I, I was at that, the last school board warrant budget, well, I forget what they call it, but, um, town meeting style. And I, I thought it worked well, that you, 'cause you could, it was clearly distinguishable who were school board members and who weren't. I don't know, maybe others feel differently, you were there, Marty.
I was there, that, that was interesting.
Did you, is that something you would want, would you like to be at a separate table like that, or do you?
Separate tables, it was good, yeah.
Okay. What if others?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, yeah. You feel differently, Dan?
I have mixed feelings, to be honest with you, I mean, we have no more authority at the town meeting than anyone else.
No, that's true.
So if we speak, I think we need to probably be prepared to just follow the, you know, get up and, and, I don't ha, I haven't been to a school board one in a while, so I don't know how they're doing it now, but.
I think they all had, I think they all had mics at their individual seats. Or, oh, that's what it was, they were, they had a, they had a mic that was passed around if you were speaking.
I, my recollection is when we used to do our budget, you know, meetings in town meeting format, uh, that the, the council always sat in the front of the room, you know, facing the audience. And I, and one of the values to that is that you could match names to faces, and, and I, I, I think that's a good thing.
Okay.
There we go.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, similar format with the table up front makes sense.
I had suggested to Natalie the opposite, so.
Oh.
There, if she makes any mention of that, Nate, you can just let her know that. I did say that it was a good decision, so.
Okay.
Just so there's no confusion. I'm taking some notes.
All right, is there anything else you need from us?
No, that was the, the only other question that staff had.
Okay, does any, do any counselors have anything else?
I don't, no.
Okay, so we will adjourn, um, until seven o'clock for our regularly scheduled, uh, town council meeting. Thank you.